Sorry, sorry. At verse number 12, Acts 5:12. Hey Robbie, can you step outside and see what those poor little waifs want out there? So, Acts 5:12. "And by the hands of the apostles were many signs and wonders wrought among the people, and they were all with one accord in Solomon's porch; and of the rest durst no man join himself to them, but the people magnified them; and believers were the more added to the Lord multitudes, both of men and women, insomuch that they brought forth the sick into the streets and laid them on beds and couches, that at the least the shadow of Peter passing by might overshadow some of them. There came also a multitude out of the cities round about unto Jerusalem, bringing sick folks and them which were vexed with unclean spirits, and they were healed every one. Then the high priest rose up, and all they that were with him, who were of the sect of the Sadducees, and were filled with indignation, and laid their hands on the apostles, and put them in the common prison. But the angel of the Lord by night opened the prison doors, and brought them forth, and said, 'Go stand and speak in the temple to the people all the words of this life.' And when they heard that, they entered into the temple early in the morning and taught. But the high priest came, and they that were with him, and called the council together, and all the senate of the children of Israel, and went to the prison to have them brought. When the officers came and found them not in the prison, they returned and told, saying, 'The prison truly found we shut up with all safety, and the keepers standing without before the doors; but when we had opened, we found no man within.' Now when the high priest and the captain of the temple and the chief priests heard these things, they doubted of them whereunto this would grow. Then came one and told them, saying, 'Behold, the men whom ye put in prison are standing in the temple and teaching the people.' Then went the captain with the officers, and brought them without violence, for they feared the people lest they should have been stoned. And when they had brought them, they set them before the council, and the high priests asked them, saying, 'Did not we straightly command you, that ye should not teach in this name? And behold, ye have filled Jerusalem with your doctrine, and intend to bring this man's blood upon us?' Now we'll see Peter's defense in a moment. But you notice that the church is growing from strength to strength here. That after the judgment on Ananias and Saphira, that there was great fear, as we read in verse 11, that came upon all the church and upon as many as heard these things. And that continued into the general population, as the apostles continued to do signs and wonders. Notice, this isn't every Christian. This is concentrated in the apostles. And so, they're taking the lead in this miraculous phenomena, and because of their special position as eyewitnesses to the resurrection of Christ. But there's growing unity, that unity continues of the believers. We read in verse 12, the last phrase, "They were all with one accord in Solomon's porch", which was, of course, a part of the temple area. It wasn't in the temple itself, but right in that area of the buildings that surrounded the temple. So, they were continuing to be unified. And you notice verse 13, "The rest durst no man join himself to them", which is a marvelous Elizabethan English way of saying, "Nobody dared join them", because this is intimidating. If the Lord is demanding a holy life, and all of these powers are at work, I mean, we don't want to enter into this thing lightly. And so, that was pretty good for the purity of the church at that time. And we read then in verse 14, the end of verse 13, "The people magnified them." So, even though there was this general fear about the powers that were going on, their testimony was increasing, the people kept seeing how great they were becoming in the Lord. "And believers," verse 14, "were more added to the Lord multitudes, both of men and women." So, things are continuing to grow. And therefore, people bring the sick. And verse 15 says, "They are trying to get even Peter's shadow to pass over them." Now, I don't know if that was enthusiasm, just so taken up with the wonders that were going on. We don't read that Peter's shadow actually did anything to them. But I think it tells you the state of mind of the people, that they're coming out seeking the apostles. And this is, of course, reminiscent of the early ministry of the Lord Jesus Christ, when the multitudes would throng Him, when people would come to Him, when they were attracted by these signs and wonders. That didn't always translate into genuine conversion, but it did bring people to hear the message. In any case, this invariably has some pushback. As verse 16 tells us, "That they had sick folks, and those who were vexed with unclean spirits, and they healed every one." In contrast to so-called faith healers today, if people really had the gift of faith healing, I ask, why aren't they emptying the hospitals? And we have a few cancer centers, and some children's hospitals, and some other things, where no doubt they could go through and really do something. But, of course, these things are fake, and they're tricks, and they're not rooted in the things of God. Now, the pushback comes in verse 17. "As the high priest again rose up, and all they that were with him," these Sadducees, "they were filled with indignation," verse 17 says, "and they laid their hands on the apostles, and put them in the common prison." So, I assume that means they were locked up with your garden variety criminal, you know? With all the people that were kinda hardcore gang bangers, and thieves, and bank robbers, and who knows what else, that they're in there with those people. These are, of course, not criminals in the sense we would understand, but we'd call them today prisoners of conscience. These people are in jail for none other reason than their faith in the Lord Jesus Christ. And that was an ongoing problem in the church age, in the New Testament era. Hebrews 13 says, "That we are to remember those who are in prison as bound with them." We know what goes on today. We know there are many Christians languishing in concentration camp type places in North Korea. There are many in the Middle East and North Africa. And other authoritarian regimes have imprisoned and held Christians. In recent years, we've seen that sort of thing in Iran, and Turkey, and other countries as well. So unfortunately, this type of persecution goes on. But notice, that there's no prison that can hold God's people when the Lord wants to bust them out. And I don't care if you have Alcatraz, or the Supermax at Colorado, or any other place, you're not gonna hold someone when the Lord wants to free them. Verse 19, "But the angel of the Lord..." Now, in the Old Testament, the angel of the Lord is typically a theophany. It's a christophany actually, a pre-incarnate appearance of the Lord Jesus Christ. I'm not sure if that's what we're dealing with here, or if this is just saying, "One of the Lord's angels." But I would tend to lean on the former, since it's the actual phrase, "The angel of the Lord." But in any case, "He comes, and He opened the prison doors, and brought them forth, and said, 'Go stand and speak in the temple to the people all the words of this life.'" Isn't it interesting that angels don't come to preach the gospel? We do have certain announcements made by angels. We sang a hymn earlier, that says, "Tell how the angels in chorus sang as they welcomed His birth." Well, they actually spoke as they welcomed His birth, because singing is a unique result of redemption. Exodus 15, the Israelites, when they were redeemed, their response was, they burst forth in the song. And the angels do come at different periods of time in God's Word, and they bring messages. Gabriel, Michael, other angels as well. We think of Manoah and his wife in the book of Judges. We think of Jacob wrestling with an angel in Genesis. Again, that may have been the angel of the Lord. We think of Gabriel bringing news to Joseph and Mary regarding the incarnation. Even before that, Gabriel in Luke 1, bringing the news of John the Baptist's birth to Zecharias, and on and on. But 1 Peter 1 says, that concerning salvation, he says, "Of which things angels desire to look into." You know, an angel can observe what has happened. One of the things that angels are called in one part of the Old Testament, Daniel 4, they're called watchers, certain angelic beings anyway, are called watchers. "And as the angels watch from above, what have they seen?" Imagine what they must have thought when the Son of God veiled His glory in human flesh, and came down and was born as a baby. Imagine what they must have thought, when they saw Him as a boy in the temple, or they saw Him as a man toiling in his father's carpenter shop, or they saw Him begin His ministry, and go about healing people and preaching. They came to strengthen Him after His temptations, according to Mark 4. They came to strengthen Him in the garden of Gethsemane, after that ordeal and prayer. And of course, the angels were there at the resurrection scene. After the Lord had risen from the dead, they were guarding the empty tomb, and ready to tell the women that the Lord was not there, but had risen, and appeared unto Peter, and gone forth, and so forth. But the angels don't know what it's like to be redeemed. There are no angels that are saved from their sin. There are angels that have fallen, and therefore, they're kept in chains unto judgment. 2 Peter and Jude both refer to that. There are angels that have fallen, and are diabolical, unclean spirits, working on the earth to defile and delude human beings. We read of the many instances of unclean spirits and demons, and even here in Acts 5, we've read about that. But angels don't know what it's like to be saved. They don't know what it's like to be able to say, "I once was lost, but now am found; was blind, but now I see." And angels would love to be able to study the story of salvation the way we can, to say, "This is our story, our family history." Angels can't do that. Our late brother Boyd Nicholson Sr. used to say, "Angels would leave the realms of heaven's glory to preach it if they were permitted to." But that's, of course, committed to us. And the angel tells the disciples here, "To go to the temple and preach the words of this life." Now, imagine, they've already been arrested and put in prison, before they've been beaten and threatened, and they know what happened to the Lord Jesus Christ. And yet, they don't balk at this instruction. They don't say, "You first," or maybe, "I'll take a few days off before I get back on the horse and go preach." The boldness is such, that they go there, and they start preaching again. And indeed, when the heads of the high priests send the guards to go get them, they find the priest empty, and nobody can explain how they escaped. You know, when the three men escaped from Alcatraz, back in 1962, was it? They would later find the papier-mache heads that were lifelike looking in their bunks, and they would investigate and find the ventilation grates that they dug out of their walls, and the pipes they crawled up through, and the way they got out on the roof, and shimmyed down the gutters, and made it out to the sea, and even made their own homemade raft. And so, the official story goes, presumably drowned or were eaten by sharks in San Francisco Bay. Well, maybe so. But we can figure out how they did it. "Here they came, and there was no natural explanation for how these men got out; but where they were was no mystery." Verse 25, "Then came one and told them, saying, 'Behold, the men whom ye put in prison are standing in the temple and teaching the people.'" Now imagine their shock. I bet you could have heard a pin drop when the news came in. That here, they tried to stop these men, they threatened them, they put them in prison, and they can't stop this message, or even these messengers, if it be the will of God. And here it was. And there they are teaching. And so, "The captain and the officers," verse 26 says, "brought them without violence, for they feared the people lest they should have them stoned." Now again, notice, who's afraid here? The men who are under threat from the guards, the men who've been in prison? No, they're not afraid, they're bold as lions. Who's afraid? The cops are afraid, the guards are afraid, the men with the weapons. They're afraid again of the people, that's not what they should be afraid of. They don't want to come and grab these guys, and pin them to the ground, and cuff them, because they're afraid a riot might break out. And they see, the interest in the heart of the people is after these, because it says here, that the people were there listening to them. And when they brought them, they set them before the council. By the way, obviously, the apostles didn't resist or fight back, so there was no need for them to fear them. They brought them before the high priest and the council there, and the high priest asked them, "Did we not," verse 28, "straightly command you, that ye should not teach in this name? And behold, you filled Jerusalem with your doctrine." Now, isn't that interesting? "We commanded you so strictly not to teach this doctrine." And what did the apostles do? They preached this doctrine. Why? Because as they explained to them before, "Whether it is right in the sight of God to obey you more than God, judge ye." I mean, you think about it. Should we obey God or you? Well, that's a no-brainer, we'd say. You must obey God. And they continued boldly preaching. Notice what they say, they say, "Your doctrine." It was actually God's doctrine, but I'm sure they were happy to own it, because they believed it, and it changed their life. But notice the irony of that last phrase in verse 28, "and intend to bring this man's blood upon us." Now, you remember in Matthew, when Pilate was trying to set free the Lord Jesus? And he was looking for any excuse to do so, any kind of expedient to cut the Lord Jesus loose, Pilate wanted to use. And he tried to persuade the crowd, and said, "I wash my hands of this ultimately." And the crowd said, "His blood be upon us and our children." You remember that? Of course, it's the thought of blood guiltiness, of saying, "Whatever consequences of taking this man's life, we're willing to take that, because we deem this necessary, we think this man deserves to die. So, we're willing to take that upon themselves, ourselves." But really, that's a fearsome thing, to be guilty of the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ. Hebrews 6 speaks about the awful perdition that comes from trampling underfoot the blood of Christ. You know, people that reject the sacrifice of Christ. There are some that don't believe in the Lord, and they're living in darkness. They're blind, and they're ignorant, and they don't understand the gospel. But there are others that Hebrews 6 describes, that have been enlightened, that have had the light shine upon them in such a convincing way, that it can be said, "They've tasted of the heavenly gift." Now, that means, it's the same word used, when it says, "They offered the Lord Jesus the wine mingled with gall." You know, that wine that was doped with a narcotic. And the Lord was not going to imbibe anything that would dull His senses, or keep him from the full experience of suffering on the cross of Calvary. So, the Lord, when He had tasted it, the gospels say, "He refused it." In other words, He took it in His mouth, immediately discerned what this was, and didn't drink it. Well, these people get close enough to salvation, close enough to the Lord, to understand who He is, and what He's done, and yet, they spit it out. They say, "I don't want it." People like those people that have apostatized in recent weeks. People that once wrote books about the Lord and the gospel, that preached over large congregations the gospel, people that claimed to be evangelical, gospel men, and yet, now they repudiate the gospel, and also reject the Lord Jesus Christ. They are trampling underfoot the blood of Christ, and all that's left for them is cursing and judgment. Well, it's a fearsome thing to have the doctrine, or the guilt of that blood upon you. And here, they accuse the apostles of intending to bring this man's blood upon us. You remember, they kept emphasizing their guilt. "You crucified the Lord, you crucified the Lord, you crucified the Lord." And it was true, but now, they didn't want to admit that. Now, they're hesitating, before they boasted in it, before they said, "We have no king but Caesar." But now, they're having their doubts about that course. They don't like the consequences of what they've done, and they're trying to evade the responsibility and the guilt of it. Well, then Peter, verse 29, tells us, "And the other apostles answered and said, 'We ought to obey God rather than men.'" Now, notice how simply forceful that statement is. In chapter 4, he asks the question, to goad them into thinking, to provoke their understanding. Is it right to obey you more than God? And yet, since they weren't thinking rightly, they weren't submitting their minds to God. They weren't searching the scripture, to see if these things were so. So, a question wasn't going to have any kind of effect on them. Peter just flat-out enunciates their conviction in verse 29. "We ought to obey God rather than men." "The God of our fathers raised up Jesus, whom you slew and hanged on a tree." Again, another way of describing crucifixion, but here, a way that actually invokes the actual verbiage of Deuteronomy 21. "Cursed is everyone who hangs on a tree." So, this is what your law said, and this is exactly what you wanted to do. You were aiming at the entire humiliation and discrediting of the Lord Jesus Christ. You wanted Him under the curse of God. That's why you hung Him on a tree. And he says, of course, "That him hath God exalted," verse 31, "with thir his right hand, to be a prince and a savior, for to give repentance to Israel, and forgiveness of sins; and we are his witnesses of these things; and so is also the Holy Spirit, whom God hath given to them that obey him." Now, think about that. You're guilty, you slew the Lord Jesus, you hung Him on a tree. You shook your fist in God's face, and said, "We don't want Him, we hate Him, we want to kill Him." And yet, the Lord Jesus was raised up by God to what? To be the destroyer of Israel? No. To be the judge of Israel? Well, yes, one day, but not now. No, to be a prince and a savior, and to give repentance to Israel, and forgiveness of sins. You see, Israel isn't beyond God's forgiveness. The spiritual blindness that has overtaken Israel is not permanent, it's not irrevocable. In fact, Romans 11 tells us, "One day that blindness will be taken away. One day, the natural olive branches will be grafted back in. One day, Israel will be restored. A deliverer shall come out of Zion, and all Israel shall be saved." Oh, the wonder of the grace and knowledge of God. Paul asked, "Who has been His counselor, who has given him understanding?" You know, this is from the depths of God's wisdom and His mercy and grace. And here, preaching to the very men that presided over the judicial murder of the Lord Jesus Christ. He talks to them of forgiveness, he talks to them of repentance. And he not only says, "The risen Christ offers this," but the Holy Spirit, whose miracles they couldn't deny, whose signs were all over the place. We've just read about them in chapter 5. We read about them in chapter 3, we read about them in chapter 2. They can't deny these things. And what is the Holy Spirit telling them? What is the Son of God, the risen Christ, saying to them? He's saying, "Repent, and believe on Me, and you will have the forgiveness of sins." You'll even have, notice, "The Holy Spirit, whom God hath given to them that obey Him." The Holy Spirit isn't an "it," He's a "whom," He's a person. And He's given to those who obey the Lord Jesus, who obey the gospel, who believe on the Lord Jesus, who cast aside their own righteousness, and who say, "Lord, be merciful to me, a sinner, save me, O God." And the Lord gives His Holy Spirit to these obedient ones. Now, notice the result in verse 33. "When they heard that, they were cut to the heart." So again, we see this convicting, arresting message. The same phrase as in Acts 2, about those on the day of Pentecost, who were cut to the heart. "Those people said, 'Sirs, men and brethren, what must we do?'" And Peter said, "Repent, and be baptized for the remission of sins." Here, they are cut to the heart, and notice the second part of verse 33, "and took counsel to slay them." You see, you can do one of two things with conviction. If the Lord convicts you of your sin, if He manifests the darkness of your own heart, and the wickedness of your own thinking, you can either repent, you can repudiate it, and say, "I want to be saved from that," and you can cast yourself on God and His mercy. Or, you can harden yourself against that conviction, and say, "I don't want this man. He was, they were right to crucify him, I don't want him in my life." And you can thrust him aside. When you're under the conviction of sin, there's really no middle pathway. And here, they were cut to the heart, and instead of bowing and obeying the Lord, they chose to plot to slay His messengers, the apostles. Now, you remember, they had plotted before to kill the Lord Jesus. And even though there wasn't the slightest judicial reason to do it, there wasn't any legal evidence, nonetheless, on the cross. But it wasn't because they were pushing things along. Oh yes, they wanted to hang Him on that tree, they wanted to kill Him. But they couldn't put Him there, and they certainly couldn't take His life if He didn't will it. If He didn't lay down His life, He would not have died, they could not have killed Him. There was no reason death should have Him, because the Bible says in Romans 6:23, "The wages of sin is death." And the Lord Jesus didn't have those wages coming to Him, because He had no sin. He never thought any sin, never did any sin, never said anything sinful, never had anything to apologize, regret, or repent of. So, the Lord Jesus voluntarily went into death, a sacrifice for our sins. But you might look at this and say, "But these are but men, what chance do they have?" Well, if the will of God be so, they have every chance. People can't touch them, people can't hurt them. And at this juncture, something very interesting happens by the providence of God. "They took counsel to slay them, but then there stood up one in the council," verse 34 says. Who's this man? He's Gamaliel, or Gamaliel, however one says his name. He's recognized even in extra-biblical history, as one of the great Jewish sages of antiquity. In other words, one of their top rabbis, one of their greatest theologians. And he rises up, of course, we're gonna learn later in the Bible, that he was Paul's professor. He's the equivalent of Harvard, Yale, Princeton, or maybe SUNY, or City College of New York, wherever you matriculated from. He's the equivalent of one of their professors, you know, from a top university, is what I'm trying to say. And he stands up, and he tells them about some recent history. You know, we've seen other messianic figures rise up, we've seen other guys rise up with movements, and they all had one thing in common. Eventually, they came to nothing. Now listen, leave these men alone, because invariably, if this isn't of God, they're gonna fail to, and you won't have to take care of it, they'll just destroy themselves. But if it be of God, you don't want to fight against God, he gives them that advice. And God providentially uses that, so that they don't kill the apostles. Rather, they take them here, and it says, "They departed," verse 41, oh sorry, verse 40, let me go back to. "They say, 'To him they agreed,' that is, to Gamaliel; and when they had called the apostles and beaten them, they commanded them that they should not speak in the name of Jesus, and let them go. And they departed from the presence of the council, rejoicing that they were counted worthy to suffer shame for His name; and daily in the temple and in every house they ceased not to teach and preach Jesus Christ." Oh, the boldness that the Lord gave these men. But you notice, they're not killed, they're set free. And though they're beaten and commanded not to preach it, they continue preaching it. Now imagine that, they can't stop this. They want to stop it, they even want to kill them perhaps, but they can't do it. God keeps working one way or another, either supernaturally by an angel, or through providence, through Gamaliel, not even a believer, to see them set free. Now, by the way, Gamaliel's advice is very poor advice in spiritual things. He counsels a wait-and-see approach, that eventually, you'll find out whether it's true or false. Just wait, don't make a decision. Sit on the fence and see how it turns out. And I want to tell you, when it comes to the Lord Jesus Christ, that's the worst advice anyone could receive. Because if you wait and see, whether the Lord Jesus triumphs or not, that will be too late. When we see the Lord Jesus coming in power and glory, all the tribes of the earth will wail because of Him, Revelation says. And if you are among that company that has not repented and believed on the Lord... And if you are among that company that has not repented and believed on the Lord, when the Lord comes back at that second coming, what's gonna be left for you is that fearful anticipation of judgment. We hear those people in Revelation six say, "Hide us from the face of him that sits upon the throne and from the wrath of the lamb." "They call on the mountains and hills to cover them." Now, isn't that a strange phrase, "the wrath of the lamb"? Lams aren't inherently wrathful creatures, are they? I mean, if I said, "You've got a temper like a lamb," huh, that'd be a compliment, wouldn't it? We don't think of lambs getting angry. So why does the Bible talk of the wrath of the lamb? Well, simply this. If you won't have the Lamb of God as your Savior, you'll have the Lamb of God as your judge. If you won't receive his gift of salvation and eternal life, you'll only receive the judgment of the wrath of the lamb. And the writer of the hymn, "The Love of God," said, "When men who hear refuse to pray, on rocks and hills and mountains call." Conjuring up that image from Revelation six. It'll be an awful thing to wait and see in that day, it'll be too late. Isaiah says, "People will cast their idols down into holes and caves, and they'll tell the mountains to hide them," but it won't work. "There'll be no hiding from the face of the one before whom all things are naked and open and with him whom we have to do." The decision needs to be made now, we're either for him or against him. Today is the day of salvation. Today is the day to bow the knee and obey the gospel, to obey the Lord, submit to him, and say, "You're the Lord, save me, a sinner. Take control of my life, make me a new creature. By your Holy Spirit, transform me and make me like Christ, so I might please you, Lord, so that I might have eternal life and live with you forever and enjoy you, so that I might even in this life begin to walk with you and serve you." Do that today if you never have. Now, all of you here are professing believers, and I've no reason to doubt that, incidentally. But this is recorded, so you never know who's gonna see or hear this. And I want you to know, if you're in the sound of my voice, if you don't have the Lord Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior, you're not promised tomorrow. Today's the day to make up your mind if the Lord's speaking to you. If you're convicted of your sin, today's the day to believe on the Lord Jesus Christ. Come to him while there's time. Could some brother close us in a word of prayer, please?